I would like to call the July 2025 Planning Commission meeting to order.
Dana Kemp.
Here.
Nonnet Reese.
Here.
Joseph Astra.
Here.
Bill Chancellor.
Here.
Jennifer Stevens.
Here.
Oscar Mosley.
Here.
Walker Davis.
Here.
Thank you so much. Before we get started, I'd like to give a brief overview of the process of the commission. As we will be presented with agenda items by the staff, a public hearing will be opened and as appropriate. And this will be the opportunity for you to address the commission about the agenda item at hand. We want everyone to be heard and we ask that you keep your comments timed to five minutes and relevant to the case at hand. After everyone has spoken, I'll close the public hearing and once closed, the public will not have the ability to have additional comments. The representative and applicant and staff will then have the opportunity to answer any questions and respond to any comments brought up and during the public hearing. The public hearing is not a question-answer session. The commission will vote based on state and local laws and the city's comprehensive plan for 2030. In addition, I'd like to summarize our role and responsibility related to the approval of subdivision plats. By Alabama statute, a commission such as ours is the final approval authority for subdivision plats. This commission acts as an administrative body and is bound by the limitations of the state law, city zoning ordinance, and subdivision regulations. While public hearings are required on most plats, the commission's authority is limited to confirming whether or not the plat meets or exceeds specific requirements codified in laws and regulations previously described. Finally, the Planning Commission is an advisory board by the city council. Except in such cases of subdivision plats, all other decisions will be made and taken to city council, the dates of which are posted per item. Please remember to sign in when you state your name and address at the podium. Thank you. Who's up first? We have a consent agenda, nothing on it except...
Yeah, it should just be the, oh, it should be the Minnesota and the final plat.
Perfect. We have a consent agenda made of packet meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes for June and a final plat for gardens at Gatewood. Commissioners?
Who to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. At this time, I would like to open citizens' communication. If you have something you'd like to speak about that is not on tonight's agenda, please feel free to come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close citizens' communication and start with agenda item for new business. Put that down. Put that down when you're done, okay?
I'll put it back down because I don't have any more cases besides these. Alright, so this first case is a rezoning request for 306 Persimmon Drive. And the request is to rezone approximately 10.08 acres to industrial from rural. Like I said, it currently sits rural and it is requesting to rezone to industrial. The future land use of the property is light industrial, which allows for commercial support uses, light industrial uses. If you are familiar with this property, it currently houses those types of uses as a contractor office and storage yard. But the unique thing about this is that it's not permitted in the rural zoning district. It was annexed before, or after these uses were put onto the property, so it makes it legally nonconforming. So the intent of this rezoning request is to put it in compliance with both the zoning ordinance and the future land use designation. So can I answer any questions about the rezoning request?
So can you help me understand the difference between light industrial and industrial?
Yeah, so light industrial, like I said, is going to be more for those commercial support uses, warehouses, things that are a little less intense than what you'll see out over on Beehive and the industry, heavy, more heavily industrial. So that'll include like your manufacturing plants and things like that. So it really is just a use that is less intense than the more extreme.
Okay, so no, no manufacturing is allowed, okay?
No manufacturing.
Alright, thank you.
Any other questions at this time before the public hearing? Okay, thank you. We will open the public hearing for the rezoning from rural to industrial. If you have anything you'd like to say on this matter, please come forward.
Is Mr. Cotton here? I'm Stephanie McRuder.
You can do that after you speak if you'll just push name and address.
Is Mr. Cotton here?
Yes, Wyatt Cotton, but yeah, that's me. So, so, so I guess when you, for the public hearing, you would speak to the chair, you don't really address me. And so for anybody like, like, who would like to speak, so if you have any questions or anything, you can ask them and then we'll, we'll answer all of them at the end of them. And I did, I did get your email.
Okay, what about the pictures?
Yeah, so, so, so I did, so I did get them and I shared them with staff and we have a, we have a response for them.
Can't pull them up?
No, 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 so.
I wasn't aware you couldn't pull those pictures up to show the damage on Persimmons Road.
Yeah, I guess in the, in the email, it didn't, you, it wasn't a request that, that you displayed them, you just kind of shared them and saying that it was, it was the root cause of your objection. And so that, that wasn't noted and we did talk about that at a staff level. We will, we will address that afterwards.
That's a show.
So your name and address, please? If you still would like to talk.
I didn't know part of the game, that you wasn't gonna have those so that they could go up so that concerned people could also see those pictures and the damage that the city of Auburn trash trucks have did to Persimmons Drive. I had no idea that you wasn't gonna show those pictures. That's the whole meaning for me being here, to say, I object to the rezoning because we're a community back in the back there. That's 11 families back there. And to just to come down Persimmons Drive and 29 South and 29 North and be bombarded with all the traffic, the trucks, and all the garbage. It's not acceptable. But what can we do? We just keep on keeping on. I guess the next time I request to you, why would I send them to you if I didn't want them showed up on the screen so you could see the damage to the road that's taking place each and every day? And now you want to put industry down in that area?
Please address us, ma'am.
Shameful.
Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Hi, how you doing today?
Good.
So my name is Buchanan and my parents was married in the house that I reside in.
Your address, please.
My name is Larissa Buchanan.
You can pull it down. Yeah, no, right here. You can pull it, yeah, just.
And my parents was married in their house on the steps and raised five children in the house. It is so much pollution there from one company, then Rayburn Company giving out pollution from what their type of business. So now they want to put something else over there. Then you have, six of our family members has died with cancer. Nobody in the family has cancer. It's coming from all the trash and the pollution over there. Then Mr. Steve, who would do anything for anybody in the community, his house get burnt up because the workers was burning. Mr. Phil Pop went in the office to tell them that, hey, that fire is getting away. And she tell him to get out the office because he was just too loud, which I understand that. But she never came out to see what he was trying to tell her. And then Mr. Steve's house got caught afire and he lost everything. He even lost his wife's truck that he's been holding on to for 40 years because she passed with cancer. I just don't think that they need to bring more pollution and big trucks in the community. So if I go in the office and say, hey, I see some fire burning, they gonna run me out of the office too? That is our community, just the way it is, Rayburn, and I don't think they need to build anything else over there. It smells awful over there. It really does. You know, I walk four miles a day and it smells bad in that area. So, and they never did nothing for the community. We never seen them do a hot dog party, a block party, give out turkeys, hams, come see and talk to the families, see who all lost. My daughter has brain cancer from, she never had brain cancer. It don't run in my family. My father died with cancer. My mother, 85, she has cancer. She stopped eating four days ago. I've been taking care of her for nine years. It's all the pollution over there. So I don't think it's right. You know, thank you.
Thank you. Please sign in if you, if you will. Anyone else who would like to come forward? Yes, sir.
My name is Gene Merritt. I live at 693 Lee Road 15. I've been living there since 1962. And that's a long time. And we've had ups and downs down there, like break-ins and stuff like that. And I'm not throwing off on the police department. You call them, it takes them 30, 40 minutes to get there. But if you bring this in here, if they gonna use warehouses and things like that, they gonna have traffic in and out. People browse around the neighborhood and everything, and I don't think it's right. Like she was saying, Mr. Steve's already took a bump of it. And if y'all would, I wish you wouldn't pass it.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak on this agenda item? Okay, seeing no one, I'm going to close the public hearing. In this case, this is just the rezoning of the property. Commissioners, is applicant here? Thank you. You have questions?
It would be helpful to understand a little bit more of the context of the first, first speaker.
Yes, so, so Scott, Scott, you want to talk about it since you drove out there?
Well, I think the, she had shared some photographs and, and, you know, based on, you know, my observation, the photographs are clearly at the intersection of Persimmon Drive and, and US 29. It looks like most of that's confined to Aldott Rightaway, so it'd be something we would need to coordinate with them. But it was, you know, most of that damage appears to be related to the transfer station and recycle sites that are maintained there at the intersection. So traffic beyond that, and I, and I drove, you know, out, out and back along the Persimmon Drive. And you can also look at the Google images that were taken in 23 and there's been, I didn't see any significant, or, you know, change to any of the street from there on back. You know, so basically, you know, given the appearance that the traffic that generally is coming out on and off of Raven Property. So I guess backing up, isolate the two properties because the, you know, the property that's owned by others that are, you know, closer to the 29 is not part of this. And then you could see clearly from, you know, the traffic beyond that, that there was, you know, not what you might expect if it was heavy vehicle traffic on that road. So it's, it looks like it's mostly small trucks or, you know, cars. And if there are large trucks, there's not a significant enough amount that there's damage in the road. So the road conditions are confined to the, to the intersection and...
And that, and, and the trash trucks have nothing to do with this particular zoning issue?
Not this zoning, no. That, that damage would be done before you even get, you know, to this site, well, well before the site.
And my understanding is that what's, the plans of this, and we'll talk about this in the next, next case, are just to build a warehouse, right? For, for contractors.
Yeah, that's correct. And so that is the existing use out there, like John mentioned in this discussion, that this is an existing legal nonconformity. Kind of what they're doing right there, what they're trying to do is bring it into compliance and then expand the use, which they would not be able to do as a legal nonconformity. Because you can't expand nonconforming, like nonconformities.
Can I ask, please, Persimmon Drive, that's Lee County, that's a Lee County road that's main?
No, no, so Persimmon Drive is maintained by the city of Auburn. And so what they're talking about is the pictures that I was sharing, I checked the email, it wasn't requested. That, like Scott said, a lot of the damage that was in those photos is confined to what is Aldott's Rightaway and is at the intersection of what would be South College and Persimmon Drive and not what's in front of this road or down Persimmon Drive.
Okay.
And so then I guess, like, the last person who spoke lives on Lee Road 15, so that's a road that's off of this, that's off of Persimmon Drive. And so the 11 houses are confined to the western portion, which is further down this road than this use would be, so.
You know, one of the, this is a, with the public hearing, the people that spoke at the public hearing, you know, that's, that's a really, sounds like a bad situation. You know, but before us is a rezoning to remove a nonconformity.
To repair a nonconformity.
To repair a nonconformity for the same use that's been there for a number of years. There are legal remedies to deal, that can be dealt with some of these other problems, but it's just not before the Planning Commission. This is just not, that's not our decision. And so, you know, I would just encourage those that have the interest is to, not only, you know, now that you're here and you made, you're on the record, go to the, the city council and get on the record. And if that, other than that, then there has to be legal remedies, you know, if the city can't do anything. You know, there's no decision that we can make here that could change that problem. So I'd just like to say that, say, you know, we're, you know, this is just a more of a pro forma, pro forma change that we're looking to make, to, to make the planning process better. It doesn't help you, but it, you know, there's some, you know, remedy that we need to deal with.
Turning it down wouldn't help you either.
If I could add, Commissioner, that the properties I think they're referencing are, are in the county, not in the city.
In the county, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's another issue altogether.
Okay. Miss Scherz, any other questions? This is the rezoning to take it out of nonconforming status.
Move to approve case RZ 2025-010.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Alright, this request is for conditional use approval for a commercial, commercial support use, specifically contractor office, warehouse, and storage yard for that same property that was just discussed, 306 Persimmon Drive.
Just a quick question, man. Is there actually gonna be construction? I was under the impression that it's, the use is just gonna be approved and it's already existing.
So that's majority what the request is, but then there's one building that is a warehouse building in the dead center of it.
It's actually a construction.
And I can go to that site plan.
Yeah, I would like a really good explanation of the change requested.
Okay, will do. The applicant is proposing to construct a approximately 14,280 square foot warehouse. And that's what this lighter gray colored building is on the site. And there will be 400 square foot of office, office space within those walls as well that, it's kind of hard to read right now, but on your papers, you should be able to see it.
All the other buildings on this plan are staying in place?
Those already exist and they're staying. That's correct, yeah. But the request is really to bring all of it together, new and old, into compliance with the zoning ordinance.
Correct, yes.
So the site plan to us complies with the zoning ordinance and the future land use regulations and all other things are going to be reviewed and shaken out during the DRT process. But I'm happy to answer any questions and the applicant also is here.
So for the new building, does that take access then off of Lee Road or Persimmon?
Both.
Both?
Persimmon.
Okay.
But it's no new curb cut?
No, no new access. No new curb cuts, no new anything being put in there, just using what exists and putting it in.
Can you tell me if there's any outside the applicant may need to, outside storage, or is everything going to be stored in this new warehouse?
There, I think there are outside storage in the existing buildings, but the warehouse itself would be, would have walls. And we would get more details in DRT and make sure that it...
DRT, okay. And the buffer, because this does buffer a residential area to the south.
That's right. Yeah, so there is a 15-foot buffer that the applicant's called out on the site plan. But since it is a single-family neighborhood down there, subdivision, it would need a residential buffer on top of that 15.
Okay.
And we look at the landscape plans and everything during the development review process as well. So that'd be something that we'd make sure is complying.
So no need for additional buffer condition put on it because it would be, it would already happen?
It would meet our requirements, but if you all feel the need, it's within your right.
I, I, I guess, and the other question is about outside lighting for that new building?
I actually don't have any details.
That would be intrusive to the neighborhood behind?
I haven't received any details about the lighting. They would obviously have to follow the ordinance, but I'm sure the applicant could maybe go into some details about what they planned for the outdoor lighting.
One more time. Sorry, the reason for the conditional use request after it's been rezoned.
After it's been rezoned is since the uses are now within a zoning district that would allow it to be requested conditionally. It is to, since it's industrial now, none of those would be allowed in rural. Now that the off, contractor office, storage yard, and warehouse are there, the new warehouse request is one part of the, the use request. And the second is to bring the rest of those buildings that go to the storage yard and the contractor office into the compliance with the zoning.
Got it. Thank you.
That makes sense. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. This, this does require a public hearing. I'd like to open that at this time. This is for conditional use to further bring this into compliance. Anyone would like to speak on this matter? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions for applicant or staff?
Yes, can we hear the applicant on the, any outside lighting on this new building?
So the plan is to...
Who, your name?
Tyler Fair. The plan is just to match what's existing out there, just typical floodlights. There won't be any nighttime work, so other than just a floodlight out on at night, that'd be about it.
Like motion or like all the time?
We can do, we can do motion if that's, that's what's preferred, but I wouldn't think anything makes...
Additional buffer?
So yeah, we'll, we'll meet the, whatever the city specs for the additional residential buffer that's required along with the landscape plan.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners?
I, I drove out that way and I saw the property and so, yeah, well, I understand, you know, the concerns generally with the area. I didn't see anything that would warrant not moving this item forward. So I'll move to approve case CU 2025-037.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
I just, I just need to ask because I see under staff comments, administrative plat to consolidate the lots is required.
And so that will be... the lots is required. And so that will be taken care of before they're issued?
Yeah, and so, and so I guess there is, there's several moving, moving parts here. So I guess not to kind of get, get ahead of the applicant. There's, as we go back to the proxima, yeah, so the property to the west, I guess, was also something that they were looking at as well. But I mean, you can see there are multiple lots, like tax processes within there that are going to eventually need to be consolidated. So that's what that's talking about and that's common. We had that on the Christian Brothers Automotive as well, and so that's something that happens. Well, we do move forward either with a rezoning or a conditional use permit, but, and for someone to get approval from DRT and be able to move forward with a building permit, they do need to come up with an administrative plat to clean up lot lines, that way they can comply. And buffers, setbacks, and all those things can be administered, can be applied to the actual site plan.
Okay. Any further discussion? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
All right. This request is for conditional use approval for a commercial and entertainment use, specifically in event space as a component of a mixed-use development. This is located on 1027 East Glen Avenue. So the area we're currently looking at, it's kind of just highlighted in this checkerboard box. This is a reoccurring case, but we are seeking a conditional use approval. So we're currently looking at the site plan for this development. What I want to talk about is this highlighted box in red. This is currently a 15,000 square foot proposed building, and this is the conditional use application they're looking at. So half of it, or maybe about 75%, it's going to be office space. And then the rest of it, I think it's about 3,106 square foot, is going to be used for event space. But this does require conditional use, so yeah. And I think, yeah, there's one more. So this is the main floor of a two-floor building that we're looking at. This is just the first floor. So this is where all the event space is going to be, right here. It's not going to take up any of the second floor. It's just going to be strictly first floor. But it is sharing the use on the first floor with the office space, so.
So like facility, restroom facilities shared, okay.
Yeah, so I'd definitely be happy to answer any questions y'all have.
I just want to know, are any of the event, is it going to spill outside? Because at one time this was a brew pub and then it was a restaurant. And when it was a brew pub, I think it was, they had outside and music outside. So that's what I want to know, is it all contained inside?
Honestly, let me go back to this.
Got a question for the applicant.
Yeah, I, I guess, yeah, yeah, yeah. So I guess, it, it sounds like that, that might be something for the applicant. I guess we've talked about that several times, just kind of what would be the nature of their events. So I knew that's something that y'all probably have questions about. I don't, I don't know if the applicant's here tonight, but if they're not, I guess. Yeah, so, so, yeah, I guess that'd be a question for them.
Okay, good. I have a question about parking. Is staff comfortable with level of parking for events? If everyone is home in all of the other residential spaces, is parking okay?
Well, yeah, and I guess, so, so this doesn't necessarily lend itself to like a concert venue or even like, like the music, just kind of on like the beer garden or something to be associated with a, with a brew pub. And so I, I guess that kind of be part of the question of what they were asking for, what their intentions were with the event space. And so I, I, I think for, for us to answer that, and I guess kind of on our end, we knew this was a downgrade from what they were talking about from a scale and intensity standpoint when it was the brewery, because it was much more of a combined, they were going to, not a center stage place, but I, I think there was going to be, not like a, we're hosting concerts here thing, but musics associated with the beer garden kind of deal. So that'd just be in line with what type of events they were holding, and then I think we can go from there.
So, y'all bear with me because I'm, I'm still confused on this one. So is the entertainment space for the public or is this for the tenant of the building?
Yeah, that would be an applicant question.
That's an applicant.
Yeah.
I have a question too. Has there been a traffic study? I, I wasn't part of this body when this was approved previously, the whole concept.
Yeah, so Dan, do you want to?
There was early on and it included everything.
Oh, I can't hear you.
So yes, there was originally and, you know, the tenants are, the proposed tenants have changed over time, but this wouldn't be something that's more intense than what was originally proposed there, especially being like an event center, it's probably going to be things that are off-peak relative to the other types of uses that are in this complex. So we didn't expect there to be a need for an updated traffic study with this type of a use.
Okay. Any other questions for staff before the public hearing?
I suppose they're still taking entrance and all from Cherry Street, correct?
As far as I know from the site plan we've been given, that, that's still the plan.
Thank you. This does require a public hearing. I'd like to open the public hearing now if you'd like to speak on Grand Junction event space. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing, and we do have some questions for the applicant if you don't mind coming forward. Thank you.
Can I give you guys some records?
I don't know.
Good evening. Brian Stone with BC Stone Homes. Have a couple, I can answer a couple of those and I'll just take questions. But the idea is, I think it's actually about 4,000 square feet of event space and it's going to be geared towards corporate events, you know, receptions, things such as that. We will actually more than likely own and operate it ourselves. And, you know, in any event, there is a parking concern or, or booking, we have valet arrangements made, you know, that we're going to acquire that to be part of the booking and everything there. But we should, given the fact that it's off-peak, like we'll be there during the day in the office space and, you know, we'll take up all that parking. We won't be there generally when the, you know, the larger events will be occurring. We don't expect parking to be an issue. And we have the parking, parking lot designed to handle, you know, buses and such, so that they can unload.
Questions?
So, so all the events will be inside?
It's inside, but we designed, if, if you can see that space in between the two buildings, we kind of designed that, designed that as like a congregating area between the two buildings. And we, you know, Carvelas will usually have the seating for the, like the outside dining and all of that. But we have it designed where they can roll up the doors and they can spill out into that space, you know, and, and join the crowd at Carvelas or whatever if there's, and do all that. And then there's areas for like outdoor games, like cornhole and bocce and things like that that we're going to have in that little space. So I would imagine we would definitely want to allow them to use the space. The kind of, the idea was the space is kind of for the community as a whole. Everybody could just kind of congregate there. But I guess as far as the serving food, beer, wine, and all that, that would be Carvela's role primarily at that.
What kind of capacity are we talking about? Like, I'm going to have an event.
It's rated, we, our architect's still working on that, but I think it's only a couple hundred. I don't think it's anything huge. But we, we're, we're in the final phase of all the architectural drawings right now. And, you know, it's, it's kind of an evolving, you know, document, if you will. But I, I don't want to say it's like two or three hundred. We're not designing it to be a huge space. I, I think, you know, we kind of see the need more than anything is that corporate events is, is, is kind of getting to be a growing trend, you know, and this being near the airport, near the university, you got plenty of parking. I mean, I think it'd be an excellent venue for that. We're not really going for the fraternity party crowd, you know, that's, you know, because we're going to own the place, so we don't want it destroyed, you know. I, I mean, so I think.
But like a chamber events, they do a lot of that kind of stuff.
Right, stuff like that. I mean, I think it'd be kind of a cool little, little venue. And it's, it's all trying to centralize around the outdoor area and just, you know, it's just kind of a neat place to go in the afternoons and have a beer and, you know, eat wings, pizza and all that, so.
Okay.
But anyway, I had a couple other, the restrooms aren't shared also with the office space. We have a partition wall, so the event space restrooms will be their own restrooms. I think somebody said that they would be shared, but that's not the case. And the, I think that's all I had. Does anybody have any questions unanswered? Because I think we've already talked about all that.
So just so I'm clear, the event space is not open to the public. This is space that an outfit or office would need to rent out from you all.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's the plan, yep, definitely.
Yeah.
I appreciate the fact that you feel like those things, other things like fraternities or other groups might not be there. And you said really wouldn't be a daytime, but to me, I would think an event space, prime time is during the day. Chamber of Commerce during the day.
Sure.
So, and I'm, I'm hearing a couple hundred people, I'm looking at parking lot, and how will the public know that there won't be a traffic problem with how many people? I mean, yeah, you can bring buses in, you could valet, but.
Well, I mean, we would control it with the rental agreement. I mean, obviously if, if they're going to have, I mean, they have to let us know the anticipated occupancy of, of their event and, you know, if, if it exceeds X amount, you know, I mean, because our office is going to be in the same parking lot with them. So I'm probably more sensitive to it than anybody because, you know, we have to be able to park our employees. So, but, but that's going to be controlled in the rental agreement. And, you know, so we've made arrangements already with off-site developments that are close that have additional parking. That, so I mean, we're, we're, we have stuff in the works already on that. Because I mean, if, if, we don't, it's, it's not, it's, it's just kind of a side thing for us and we don't really want it to be a distraction for our business either, so.
Because based on your parking that you have, are the 18 spaces, I guess, that are there by that, I guess, is building five, those are designated for that building? So basically those spaces are not really there to be used for the event.
Correct, correct.
So those even, and those there, I guess, the seven spots.
Well, the space, you're talking.
At the top of that, I guess those could be for your area. If you were to go directly north of those 18. Because you've got, well, you've got those, because that's in the line of what you're saying is in residential border.
Oh, I see what you're talking about, yes.
Because it's within that residential border that you have drawn on your map.
Right, right. But I mean, we, we went through this and representative slogans here as well, but I mean, we're, we far exceed the parking requirements, you know, of, of the ordinance, I think. I mean, we're, we're well above it because we, again, back to us being the main tenant in the place, I mean, we don't want there to be a parking issue. And, you know, so I, I don't, I don't, as far as I think is, is one space every 250 square feet, I think, is the requirement or something of that.
Are you, do you mean for the event space or for the commercial areas?
Commercial area.
Uh, kind of varies, varies by use, so I, thereabout. So I mean, so, so the, the bigger ones kind of, kind of go from like when you have a grocery store or something like that, but they are kind of based on like different, different increments of commercial square footage. So at 250 or so, that, that, that sounds about right, but it does vary per, by use.
So we're, I think we're pretty far below that and, or, or we're below that. And, and, and again, you know, most of that parking space will be consumed during the daytime by us. I mean, I understand what you're saying if there's a large chamber event there and things like that. But that's, you know, we're, we're kind of thinking like more corporate retreat events, you know, and stuff to where the parking probably wouldn't be as big of an issue as that. But as, as far as most of your venues say is a wedding reception or, or some, you know, employee Christmas party, you know, things like that is, is pretty much our target. I mean, you know, that's kind of the beautiful thing about this development is Carvela's is going to have more of a nighttime environment. But 12,000 square foot of that building or 10,000 square foot of that building is all daytime parking folks, you know, in our business. So, you know, I, I do think the uses complement each other. And, and it's certainly less than what we had planned before with the same amount of parking when it was going to be wildly. So I think we're, we're probably 50% reduced of, of, you know, as compared to what they were planning on doing when, when they were in the picture.
Yeah, and so I, I do want to offer this to the planning commission. So we, so for uses that can't park all of their, can't park all, all of their patrons on site, it's like kind of similar to the graduate, we have, we have had people who have, who have had to present us with the contract of showcasing that they do have the outside parking available, and I, I know you just referenced that. And so if that was something that, that you guys wanted us to just verify on our side of things, if y'all, if y'all wanted that to be happening, maybe you guys can make that, that a condition or something. But we have done that in the past where people have, they do have to just show that they do have the off-site parking agreements with people to, well, if we're going to host events of 200, 300 people, then in addition to whatever they have, if they had any deficiencies from that number, then that number would have to be shown by contract with somebody else that they could park it. And that is something that we have done in the past, that we do verify, we do have people update accordingly.
And we'd, we'd be okay with that.
I like that.
I think that's a great idea.
That makes a lot of sense, yeah. So is that a condition?
Yeah, 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 yeah. That, yeah, that, that'd be fine. So pretty much, I guess the condition would just be for whatever events that they were going to do that was going to exceed, I guess if you guys had that 200, 300 range.
Well, I mean, can, can we put a car out to work with staff on trying to formalize that? Because we don't have the full drawings yet. We don't exactly know the full occupancy number and all of that.
Yeah, yeah, and I, yeah.
We'd be certainly willing to work with staff on that. I mean, I, I, I just, I can't commit to a number right now just because.
Oh, yeah, so, so, so I guess it wouldn't be, commit to, to a number per se, but I guess just kind of whatever the deficient, whatever events y'all are trying to throw, right? We wouldn't have to do this by each event because I guess whatever y'all were approved for by capacity standpoint from a code side and whatever parking deficiencies you had on site to meet that, to meet that additional number, you would just have to have that in contract somewhere. And it'd be a standing contract of, hey, let's say it's like we're deficient 150. We either partner with Kroger, et cetera, like, you know, this shopping center next to it where we have, these are the 150 spaces, they're identified here by contract, yada, yada, yada. And so that, that's how it works. And like I said, we've had, we've done that with other agreements with downtown. So that, 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 that wouldn't be an issue. And it's something that we work with different property owners on and different projects to accommodate. And when they have to fluctuate in those numbers, we just rework the contract. And it's something that we verify.
So let me ask, if I was going to put a condition on that, how would I, how would I say that?
Yeah, so.
It's not specific.
Yeah, so, yeah.
And that part, but I mean.
Maybe it's just a contract for overflow.
Yeah, I would say a contract for off-site overflow parking pretty much, but we're just, that needs to be presented to staff.
Right.
I, I guess, and it's probably like conditioning, like DRT or whatever. And I, I think that, that's, that's, that's kind of what we figured out for other ones, so.
Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion, conditions?
Move to approve case CU 2025-031 with the condition that any overflow parking requires a contract.
Well, I guess that any, any additional off-site overflow parking.
For event space.
Yeah, for event space, that's contract would be presented to staff, presented and approved by staff.
With the condition that any event that requires overflow parking requires a contract with.
To be presented to staff.
To be presented to staff.
I guess that works because I mean, I've.
If not, the attorney can.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, because I said, the intent of that is not that like we do this for every single event that they have. It's just that they have whatever standing agreement that they have that we do, just be presented that contract. And that, it's really just, we'd only really, really revisit it once and everything is.
Able to restate the motion or does she need to?
I think we're good. I think if you just want to get the second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second with approval adding a condition. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Do you need to lower that? You know, the podium itself.
This next request is for a recommendation to city council for conditional use approval for a performance residential development, a multiple unit development located at 1397 North Dean Road. The property is approximately 27 acres in size. It's on the west side of North Dean Road, just north of East University Drive in the commercial development district, zoning district. There is a portion of the property that's within the Bedell PDD that was approved in 2000. This request has received conditional use approval three previ, previous times, excuse me. This iteration of the project is 243 units with 431 beds. There will be a mix of studio, one, two, and three bedroom units in a variety of building styles. Since the packet went out, this was the site plan that was included in your packet. The applicant has revised the site plan to take into account or to reflect the current floodplain boundary and has reconfigured the units on the northern side of the project. Um, that's really all I've got. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, if you just want to go to the next, you can have him go to the next slide. There we go.
Oh, yeah. This will show the different building styles and the layout of those.
Yeah, with this new site plan that we just saw, planning says additional nine parking spaces are required?
Yes, just the calculation that was provided on the site plan was incorrect, so.
It was incorrect, okay.
I had one question because I was not on commission when it was originally done these other two times. I know it's.
I had one question, because I was not on commission when it was originally done these other two times, I know it's going up by fifty-five beds and down by seven, is it just the units are all different, or what's making that change?
Yeah, so.
Going up fifty-five beds?
Yeah, so, so, I, I, it's not, not, not to get too technical about it, but this is a game, not, not, not a game, so it has, has a negative connotation, but different multi, multi-unit developments kind of have different models that they do, and so some would do three bedrooms, four bedrooms, five bedrooms kind of deal, but they're all one unit. And so sometimes units may be artificially low, but the beds are really kind of what they're after, so then the bed total's really high. But when you have people who are kind of, and the market's kind of shifting, people are looking at, can we kind of split those twos and threes, or those threes and fours, and split those into twos and ones, because we want more studios? So then what happens is that for every unit that they have, that might be a bed, but it's only one unit, and so the, the unit count of them gets kind of odd, but kind of how we do the parking count is by bed. And so, so, so sometimes, like, the, the numbers get really weird, like, with the math of, sometimes, like, they're trying to capture, you know, the ones in the studios, and then other times, they're just trying to, even though they have a depressed number of units, they're just kind of cramming four or five bedrooms into them sometimes. And so that, that's really what it is, it's really just kind of a difference of how many units they were having, and oftentimes, that number will increase because they're doing one bedrooms and studios, and those, so they still have, they still require parking spaces.
Okay, I should look at it as fifty-five more people in there, if you're looking at students, as cars and all for traffic too.
Okay, this does require a public hearing, if anyone would like to speak on interlude Auburn conditional use, like to open that now. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have questions?
Yeah, that section of North Dean Road is pretty skinny, right? So you've got two lanes, and then you've got kind of a center thing going down the middle, and then there's a residential, uh, area in the back. So what's the thinking on the, you know, traffic, um, plans for that area? I know a traffic study's, um, and et cetera, but.
So I'll, I'll kind of tee this off, and then I'll, I'll, I'll turn so over to Dan, but, so, Dean Road is a part of the major street plan, and so, as you notice, Dean Road currently does not extend to two eighty. There's a plan for Dean Road to extend to two eighty, and eventually, that's, that's when there's gonna be a pretty aggressive linear expansion, but then also just kind of looking at what there'll be additional right away that'll be required, um, to kind of accommodate, like, the future design, and I guess kind of from a design standpoint, kind of where that's at, I'll, I'll turn that over to Dan to answer that question.
For this development, I mean, they will be doing a traffic study, um, there was one done prior with the other development, but that was two thousand and eighteen, when they did that, so, um, I really will know more about what improvements are gonna be triggered with that. I mean, the, the traffic counts are gonna be completely different now, that we're seven years later, so, and the development's a little bit bigger, so, um, but we'll know, I mean, there, there will be improvement, there's gonna be turn lanes there, left turn, right turn.
Okay.
Whether all access points will need that, you know, we don't know that yet, what it's gonna do, the intersection, not sure about that yet either, so.
What about the road out to, uh, Shelton Mill, North Dean to Shelton Mill?
North Dean to Shelton Mill.
Yeah, so North Dean doesn't connect to Shelton Mill, there is a road, there's a proposed road on the major street plan that does go west to Shelton Mill, I guess that was one of the things that in our recent, that, it's on the map.
Right.
Whether that is constructed or not, just kind of depends on other developments, there's, uh, there are other developments that are just kind of, uh, north of this, that are also, like, the streets are gonna be a major component, not just North Dean, but also that road that you're talking about that would provide access to Shelton Mill as well. So these are, those are things that, as those other developments take shape, that we'll have answers for that, that y'all will see, yeah, correct.
And I would hope all the improvements they just finished on Dean and East University will accommodate them coming from that other direction.
We, we just recently talked about this, and that, that intersection's overbuilt for this reason, so.
Okay, it was considered.
Yep.
Okay, good.
Yeah, very good.
Okay. Uh, and the changes made for the new site plan given for tonight included that flood change, right?
Correct, correct.
Okay, commissioners, any further questions or discussions before a motion?
I'll move to approve KCU twenty twenty-five dash zero thirty-eight as amended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
They saved my two cases for the end, so we don't have to raise and lower the.
Well, see, now I can see everybody.
Exactly, yeah. Okay, this next, these next two cases are in regards to the same property. So the first request is an annexation, they are proposing to annex a hundred and twenty-seven acres of a larger two hundred and twenty-three acre parcel. The property's located on Society Hill Road, east of Nash Creek Drive, and north of the most recent Adair property that was annexed a couple of months ago, the Mitchell Farms annexation. Uh, the property, if annexed, is part of the, it is in the, um, Oakle Tree, Lake Oakle Tree watershed, so if the property comes in, it will come in as rural with the overlay of the conservation overlay district. Excuse me. Uh, here is an exhibit of the property to be annexed, is in white, it's a hundred and twenty, why isn't that working, pressing the wrong button? This property here is a hundred and twenty-six, almost twenty-seven acres, to be in the city limits, and the property in yellow, which is about ninety-six and a half acres, will remain in the county. Currently, it's two properties, it is a little triangle piece along Society Hill Road, and then this property here. And, let's see, I don't know if the front slide said the anticipated, okay, the anticipated city council date for this one will be August nineteenth, and not July twenty-second. And that is for, um, that is at the applicant's request. And if you have any questions regarding the annexation, I will be glad to answer.
I've got a question for staff.
Okay.
Uh, it's, annexation priority is low.
That is correct.
So how many points, what was it out of twenty?
Oh, yeah, 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 so, so I guess the actual number of this, and like, like I said, I think this is one of the things that we need to update, like, just annexation priority, and I think specifically when addressing the Lake Oakle Tree watershed, I think, and as I said, I think there's a lot of prevailing thought that the sentiments around that have changed. So the original annexation priority really looks at things from a, is this viable for, from, from a development standpoint? Are there access to utilities, to what kind of schools, can we get, like, you know, can we sewer this, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? The large answer with that, for this property at that time, was no, the answer for that is still no. What has changed is just that the sentiment around the Lake Oakle Tree watershed is that, especially the far reaches of it, this was so far out that this was never, the intent was that development isn't gonna find this place, it, it'll be a very long time before it does. But now that it has, there is sentiment around, well, if there is gonna be development in the Lake Oakle Tree watershed, we would like it to comply with our standards, and so then therefore, we would, to do that, it should be in the city. And so that just hasn't been reflected in what the current annexation priority is, but like I said, I think with the Lake Oakle Tree watershed, when we do update it, that is what's gonna be one of the things of, is it in the watershed, then we should probably annex it.
Thank you.
So implying that when we change that policy, this will be a higher priority?
Yeah, 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 because, like, like I said, the initial annexation scores really, they approach it from a lot of different angles, and it's a very thorough and technical analysis, and it looks at it from a lot of different angles, and it comes to the conclusion of, is this property viable for development or not? And, like I said, for everything on the far reaches of the city like this, the answer is no, but then it's also, is it in the Lake Oakle, Lake Oakle Tree watershed? We do not want development out here, dense development, but also associated with that.
We want to take care of the waters.
Correct.
Take care of the water, yeah, okay.
And so that, that's just something that needs to be updated and reflected in the new metrics that we do when we do update the annexation policy, or the annexation priority list.
What about the water service?
What about utilities, just all the way around?
Yeah, utilities all the way around.
I don't think there should be any, um, I guess, Sam, would you have any, any?
There is no sanitary sewer service there, and.
Microphone, we can't, microphone.
Yes, uh, yeah, there's no current, uh, plans for sanitary sewer service in that area, and that area is served by rural water authority, so it's, it's not served by the waterworks board.
So where's the nearest sewer connection?
Ooh.
Long way away?
Yes.
Yeah, I want to say several miles.
I think it's East Lake subdivision, probably.
You're out there.
East Lake all the way back? Wow.
That would be a guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
And is, is there a reason why, though, I, I mean, i- is the whole area in red owned by the same applicant? And if so, is there a reason why the whole of the property?
That was just their, that, that, that was out of their discretion, so, so kind of, kind of like we talked about Monday at, at the meeting, um, it is up to property owners to define what they want annexed, and this is what they, uh, would like to have annexed.
Okay, clear.
Well, I almost had the same question.
Oops.
Because with your comment about watershed at Packet, I wondered that same question, so, I mean, that's fine, that's, that's no problem, I just didn't know if that was gonna be a requirement or not. So, okay, so annexations do not require a public hearing.
Move to approve case AX twenty twenty-five zero zero six, annexation.
Second.
I have a motion, oh, go ahead.
Oh, and so, and so I guess just kind of, uh, it's, confirm what Katie said, the near sewer is East Lake, and that's a ways up Moore's Mill Road.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item?
Okay, the next case is for the same property, and this is a request for preliminary plat approval for a thirty-seven lot conventional subdivision. The subdivision will cover the entire property, so it'll be two hundred and twenty-three acres with a hundred and twenty-seven in the city limits. And here is the plat, and it will show, the yellow again is the county, so one large lot will be in the county, remain in the county, and about two-thirds of Lot fourteen will remain in the county. Now, this being the case, if the owner of this property anticipates having city services, i.e., schools, then the residence would need to be constructed in the portion of lot in the city limits.
Oh, yeah.
So.
Just Lot fourteen?
Just Lot fourteen, that's correct, and, um, that was one of my comments in the staff report, as well as, um, stating what the purpose for the larger lot is. If it's a residential lot, that needs to be stated, if it's other than residential on the, um, subdivision plat. And as far as inquiries on this development, staff did field several phone calls about the development. Um, most of them were in opposition of the subdivision, and a couple of them were just informational about the development.
Okay, so Lot fourteen?
Yes.
A portion of it is in the city, and a portion of it is in the county.
That's correct.
And all the stuff on the other side of the water is a different lot?
Yes.
Okay.
And it has frontage with this street up here.
Okay, got it.
And there is a greenway on the, along the creek, and they have requested a waiver to the subregs to not place the greenway in a greenway easement that the subdivision requires, the subdivision regulations require.
Can you, can you point the greenway out again?
It's along the creek.
So it's just along the creek, okay, got it.
Yeah.
Interesting, okay.
Wait a minute, let's talk about that a little more, what?
Sure.
But I thought that there was more information to that.
Yeah, 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 and so they were, they're open to the condition that if it, if this should, should be waived, um, that they would then, they're, they own the notch of Adair where the creek goes into a hook, so I guess if you go to the approximate, you can see it. Yeah, if you could zoom in on it, Katie.
I don't know how to zoom in on this.
Well, I guess I, like.
Yeah, there you go.
A little lower.
Lower, it's down here.
Yeah, 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 a little lower, lower.
So the anticipated greenway.
Other way, other way, other way, other way.
Is along the creek. And the greenway goes through Adair, and then cuts through right about here, along that line, and connects to the city's future park.
Okay.
Here, so the greenway would provide about a two-mile chain, um, through Adair's property is about a mile, and then an approximate additional mile would be added if it extended through the current property, the subject property.
Yeah.
Still not sure I understand what the waivers.
They're requesting not to, to not provide the greenway.
Right, and.
On this parcel that's in red.
Correct, yes.
Correct, and so, and so then the notch is the notch where the creek is just in the white, it's the same property owner, and so the, if we had the greenway map as a whole, but it's, it's this far, it's a far.
Right here?
No.
No, 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 no.
How is this gonna improve the greenway situation here? How would that waiver improve it?
The waiver?
Yeah, if we did the waiver, which says no easement on this property that's in red.
But we'd like to move it.
But we're gonna do something else, what's gonna, how's that gonna improve the situation?
I don't know the specifics of the.
Yeah, so, and so, so, yeah, 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 so, so I guess kind of, so the notch that is kind of, goes from that, like, eastern edge of, of Adair, and then goes south. So the entirety of that proposed trail, and I guess that easement, this is the very end of it, so the trail that is proposed on the greenway map for the city ends in this development. And they were, and so the idea was that, I guess it goes from there, that point, all the way snake south, it goes across Lee Road one forty-six, and then starts bending west, and then eventually you make it through along Tewahka Creek to Lake Oakle Tree watershed, and it keeps going west. And so the idea was that, even if you get the far reaches of this, and this trail, the trail could be greater if it were to continue on going south, and that way it would provide connectivity back down to Lee Road one forty-six, across Lee Road, Lee Road one forty-six, and then head back west. And so you can't do that without going through, if you were to not get this notch that's mentioned by the property owner, you'd have to reroute this, and it would have to go through Adair, which already has been platted. And so that was just kind of, that, that was what they were thinking, and I said, so, so the entirety of that trail, this is just the northernmost end of it. I know you see the creek the entire way, but the greenway on the map does not go the entire length of this creek, it goes, like I said, to about the end of this property, and that's it. And so the reason for the request was that the applicant, their idea was that a trail through this, that would be open to the public, would change the entire feel of their subdivision, and would not be the same kind of neighborhood that they envisioned initially. And so it's, works out that they are the property owner that would hold the access to that notch along the creek, that then would provide access for the trail to keep going south, which would then provide a greater connectivity, like I said, for the entirety of the trail.
That's goodness, so where, where, is the easement, what's north of this property, is any, is, is that, uh, greenway up there at all?
No, it's not, and so, like, like I said, it ends, it doesn't follow the creek the entire way, and it, debatable if it's a creek that far north.
So right now, the greenway is just proposed, right?
Yeah, 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 so, so essentially, the greenways across the city, some of them are constructed, but a lot of them are just easements, and like, we've been using this twenty, twenty-eleven plan to get them where we can, and kind of string them together, and like I said, this was, yeah, so this was kind of the plan, this is kind of the idea of, like, when we started getting development out in these far-flung places of where we hadn't really considered them, is there gonna be the will to actually construct these trails, how, like, how do we get them, and so we're just trying to get them from a connectivity standpoint.
So let me ask you this question then, so right now, the proposed greenway does go through that little notch right now, that is not in city limits.
Correct.
And so what is, what's the advantage to us making this kind of trade? In other words, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so.
Already, can't we already have that greenway go through that notch?
I mean, yeah, possibly, right, but, but I guess, like, let, let's, let's say, like, if, like, the mile from, like, the bottom of the red square, let's say the trail goes north another mile. From the bottom of the red square, the trail goes south for several more miles, and so then the issue would be, there'd be no connectivity to get to the rest of it without having to snake it either onto the road in Adair, and then hit one forty-six, and then reach back across going down one forty-six to. and then hit one forty-six, and then reach back across, going down one forty-six, then re-up on the creek, or instead of just following the creek the entire way and going south on it. And so there's more connectivity on the south side than there is on the north side. It's just that the north property is coming into the city, and like, you know, is up for, is up for debate first.
So it's a, it's, it's a good deal then, you're thinking?
I think it makes sense, I mean, for, for the larger connectivity, I mean, what, what we've talked about, like I said, I mean, the, going north on this, it's not much of a creek.
Where is that mentioned in this?
Yeah, it's the waiver.
But there's a waiver that they're going to include the way, the notch.
Yeah, I guess that, that was, so I spoke to the applicant, they're comfortable with that being a condition, um, that you guys waive it on the condition that they provide the, that they provide the greenway easement along the notch as a condition, not just something that we talked about, as a condition of the approval.
The notch, yeah.
No, 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 but I, but I guess, um, I guess, I, I guess, I guess we would need, need like a legal description, kind of what we're talking about, um. But, yeah.
So as a condition that they would trade access, greenway access to another parcel held by owner?
And that this would continue even if you sold the parcel?
I would suggest a plat that, that shows this portion of the greenway that needs to be.
Does it come back with final?
No, it would be an admin plat.
No, it'd be an admin plat, but yeah, yeah, yeah.
But the greenway portion would go to council.
Yeah.
Okay, so we wouldn't see it on the final at all, it would be.
No, so.
We can bring it to you.
Yeah, so I guess kind of, kind of like, like Katie's saying, I mean, if you guys just want a condition that before this goes to final plat, that there's an admin plat that dedicates the greenway to swap before this goes to final, um, that, that would work. And then that's, that's something that you guys would get on a report, and you guys would see the admin plat. Um, that'd be something easy for them to do.
Okay.
Okay, the applicant is here, but this does require a public hearing. So, after all this discussion, we're going to open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak at the public hearing, please come forward. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Uh, my name is Steve Ward, out on the property to the north.
Your address, your actual address.
Between Auburn Opelika and Borghardt, and trying to stay out of all three. That's my goal. But, uh, the only thing, other than more neighbors coming in, and NIMBY, I don't want it in my backyard, but that's the way it goes, I think this would be a nice addition to the area. My only question or concern would be, as in the plat that Adair had, which made a contingency to connect on to this property, where that road to the south will be, I'm asking for a right-of-way between, I think it's lots twenty-seven and twenty-eight. If they took thirty feet off of the lot line on each side, that would give a sixty-foot right-of-way going to my property that someday, probably after I'm gone, might develop, but, like I said, as a condition or whatever, as, as it were made possible from Adair to extend into this property, I'm asking that the road there between, I think twenty-seven and twenty-eight, that's a pretty good location, because it's on a hill instead of down on the creek bottom. Just thirty feet on either side would give a right-of-way. Not asking them to pave it, or put it in, or anything, just the right-of-way being provided. If somebody wanted a future date, just like it goes down and dead, ends into the creek. So potentially, at some point, it can go across the creek. But that, that was my only issue with it, was just providing for, at some point in the future, and y'all got me down on the hit list for future property. But, uh, hopefully, I'll get to enjoy it a lot longer before that happens, but, uh, we'd just like to see that provision made, so that as growth happens, which is a good thing, it'll be able to continue on.
That is an unusual request, not one I don't, I don't know that we can provide that for you, of this body. But I appreciate you being so positive and supportive.
Is the, uh, I thought the planning commission did that, or required?
It's not on the plat before us.
We'll, we'll, we'll answer it at the end of the, the end of the public hearing.
Okay, that, that was my only comments, thank y'all.
Please sign in, thank you. Anyone else like to come speak for the public, public hearing? I'll close that now, and commissioners, do you have questions for applicant or representative? Invite them forward.
So I, I guess just kind of to, to address that, we had a similar thing, um, with the Adair property as well. That is, uh, if he would like that, that's essentially asking for land, he needs to work that out with the property owner. So that, that is not a condition that y'all can make. Uh, the configuration, the configuration does comply, and it's up to the staff to prove it, and I guess it, it does comply, just kind of from the stubouts, and, uh, the access to different lots, but if you were requesting access to the north, then he would, that's essentially, he'd need to buy that from them.
But we.
Not something you guys can require, no.
Would not have done a connectivity that way because he's not in the city?
No, I mean, I, I guess, Dan can, Dan can answer that, but I, I, I think just kind of stubbing out to, to the creek, uh, so far, just kind of satisfies that. So I mean, it looks like they're talking about.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's not something we require, that is, you know, it's not a property that was in the city, and they, they were providing stubouts to the south and the, and the east already. Um, so what they were proposing initially made, made sense to us in, in terms of providing connectivity.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know that we can point to anything that would require them to stub out to the north.
Right, that's fine, I mean, they, they, we can put them together to talk and chat about it, if they want to. Uh, but commissioners, do you have questions for the applicant and representative? If you will, please come forward.
Any sign?
Uh, you can do it afterwards, please.
I'm Michael Dilworth, you need my address?
Yes.
Uh, I live at thirty-one seventy Moore's Mill Road.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, so, going back to the greenway question again, um, what's the, what's the reason that you all are opposed to the proposed greenway through your property?
Well, I think, um, you know, if you went to this, a, a number of reasons, but if you went to this section of creek, I don't, I don't think it served the city's intention for the greenway. Um, the banks of this, of the creek in this area are way too steep to be able to put any kind of walk-in or biking trails, for one. But also, if we go, can we go to the proximity map, the big one? Um, that notch right there in the corner, I don't own all this property, I, I'm kind of the representative in this case. I'm purchasing the area, um, with the platted lots, or planning to. But there's zero intention for that corner, that notch of the greenway, to ever be brought into the city or be developed. And so the idea is that, um, the owner of that property is willing to provide that section of land so that the greenway can be miles long, instead of having three miles to the south, let's say, and then a mile, and then, and then it'd be broken.
Right.
And then a mile and a half, so to speak, some of which, I think when y'all really got in there and started looking at it, y'all would abandon that last north section anyway, because it's not feasible to use for the intended purpose. Does that, does that make sense?
It does.
So I think everybody wins.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Commissioners, motions, conditions, waivers? You want us to vote on this separately?
Yes.
So, motions on preliminary plat first, please.
Uh, I move to approve, uh, let's say, annexation case, excuse me? Thank you. Uh, PP twenty-two-five dash zero twenty-one, Cold Place, um, uh, the preliminary plat. Do we just approve it without mentioning the administrative plat, or the condition?
That's on the waiver.
Yes, on the waiver.
That's on the waiver.
Yeah, that's, that'll be on the waiver.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now for the waiver.
A move that we approve the waiver in exchange for the notch that we talked about.
Condition, condition, condition.
Okay, on the condition that there be the, that we, that city be allowed greenway access to that notch in.
I got the, I got the parcel, I'm moving, give me a second.
Okay. Notch in, notch in the property.
Yeah, so I guess it's, yeah, so the parcel number, um, it, it's one-eight-zero-one-zero-one, six zeros, one, zero, zero, one, uh, just kind of, I guess really just, it's the greenway easement along Robinson Creek, uh, along that parcel, along that parcel number.
Okay.
Okay, will you please restate?
Okay, I move that we approve the waiver, uh, with the condition that we, um, that we allow greenway access to parcel number, whatever he mentioned, um.
Which is greenway?
Which is, what's that?
A greenway easement upon Robinson's Creek.
A greenway easement upon Robinson Creek. Thank you very much, Chair.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for the waiver, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you so much. And that ends business of the night for agenda items. Do we have any other business to do, sir?
Yeah, 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 I need the election folks. Uh, we've had a vice, we had the vice chair resign because of employment, and that leaves a vacancy, so you guys either need to elect, or, and or decide who's going to be the vice chair.
So, okay, great, we have an election to do, so we do have a vacancy in the vice chair. I would, um, like to take nominations from the floor, commissioners, if you would like to do that.
I'll make a nomination. I'd like to nominate Dana Camp.
Okay, I have a nomination.
Vice chairman, excuse me.
Vice chair. I have a nomination, Dana, are you willing to accept this nomination?
Yes.
Okay, great, um, do I need a second on that?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a nomination and a second, all those in favor for Dana Camp to move into the vice chair position? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, well, with this change, that now brings a vacancy to the secretary seat, and I would like nominations from the floor of that. I would like to nominate personally, I guess if I can, as the chair, Oscar Mosley for secretary position. Can I do that from my chair, or someone?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, Oscar, are you willing to accept this position of secretary?
I accept.
Thank you. Uh, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor of Oscar's secretary, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much.
All right. Oh, Amber Alert.
Do we need communications?
No, just that there, we, we recently were doing our by and end budget plan, and just kind of looking at all of our long-range planning, and all the things that we're going to be doing. Quite the list of stuff, quite the list of stuff. So we'll be, um, we'll, we'll be hitting the ground running, I, I think, kind of in late, late July, to kind of prioritize and organize, prioritize and kind of get a schedule for everything. And so, um, I'd say kind of plan on a pretty busy fall, uh, just kind of from, uh, extra, extra meetings, but also just kind of going over different parts of the zoning ordinance, different facets of it, and different intricacies of special development standards that we need to change, so, that's really it.
You're here.
Okay, fabulous, um, Chris, is this his second meeting?
Yes, this is their second meeting, yes.
He presented tonight, it was great, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, and so then, uh, there should be a nomination at the July, the second July council meeting, um, of the two other commissioners, um, so.
So by August, they would be in place.
Yep, 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 yeah, by August, and so I think we're going to have some planning commissioner training. Uh, we'll either, we'll probably have specific training for the two people coming on, and then we'll also probably have training as a whole, um, for the entire, for the entire body, and also probably open some other commissioners, some other boards as well.
Is it, I heard a rumor that the interviews for the new potential members is open to the public.
Yes, it is.
Is that the case?
Apparently it's on the calendar, so.
July sixth, for this next Wednesday, if you're free.
I plan to be there.
At the city meeting.
There you go.
Okay, if, um, look forward to a busy fall with, with all of you. Okay, I, I need a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.